I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the wall?
Certainly. Supervisor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara?
President.
Councilwoman Isley?
Here.
Councilman Powell?
Yeah.
Councilman Martel?
Yeah.
Well, we folded in the battery energy storage review into the hearing, the meeting we just had. So, we're going to start the work session now with the proposed development of 270 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, the former Boardy Barn. And with us is David Gil Martin, attorney for the applicant, and Janice Shear, Town Planning and Development Administrator, and...
We have Rob Seldat coming, Brian Danzy, he will be on line.
All right, Rob, Brian, you want to come up also? Pull up, we can pull up an extra chair for you.
Visuals would be good, I suppose.
Oh, yeah, we're very interested in what you've got.
Just got to put it in place.
That's the first test.
I love that everybody brings their own now because they know we don't have one that actually works.
Kevin, are you going to be able to position the cameras to capture that, I hope?
Right over here, probably?
Um, yeah, probably over here would be best.
That's actually in a good spot where it is right now.
Oh, okay.
Never mind.
The audience has spoken.
Kevin, you're good with that?
I can work with that.
You want to turn it a little bit, facing you, facing the...
Yeah, if they could just turn facing a little bit more on the camera on the wall.
Towards that one.
Which one?
Rick said.
Rick said.
Rex, toward Rex, toward Rex. Is that good, Kevin?
Perfect.
Good for...
Fine, I've seen it. I actually thought it was the Parish Arts Museum.
That's its inspiration. This helps to hand up...
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Statement on the matter.
Thank you.
Hello? Anybody else? Do you need one?
Thank you.
So, thank you for taking the time and letting us come in and talk to you at a work session. I'm first going to ask Rob just to run through, Brian, run through their family backgrounds and their experience in running hotels on Long Island, and then give you what is in the really early conceptual stages of what we're hoping that we can do here. And then, after you see what we have planned, then we sort of have to outline how we're going to go through getting this done, which is really, I think, the best way is amending the zoning code. That's where Janice will certainly share her expertise with us. But so I thought it'd be good to get some background of what we're hoping to do and then talk about possible zoning changes. I think we've seen, all of you on this, except for Councilman Martel, encouraged us to go talk to the civic groups, which we've done. I believe we have a pretty positive response from them, so...
I'd actually like to just say, I think that that's, you know, when it comes to development and planning, I think that step that you've taken with respect to this project is a good one and represents the type of, you know, public back and forth that needs to happen when it comes to changes in the community. So, I really appreciate that.
Welcome, and we have two representative families that want to develop this who are very into the community and what the community wants, so it was a pretty easy, seamless process. With that, I'll turn it over to Rob and introduce yourself.
Sure. Good morning, I'm Brian Danzy. My family has developed and managed four hotels on Long Island, Marriott Hilton and IHG Hilton Holiday Inn Products, two of which, two Marriott's in Farmingdale, we still manage today. Yeah, thank you for the time, we look forward to discussing what we'd like to do here.
So, locally, you have two hotels, Riverhead also?
That's our family.
That's your family.
I asked Brian to introduce first, as he's one of the property owners on part of the hotel development project. And I've sort of, as you might have seen in the media, become the face of this, having presented, it's been interesting. Our background is very similar to the Danzys. We've been friends a long time now as industry associates, but also now personal friends and partners. We started out in Garden City 25 years ago, built a very successful Wingate Inn and sold it. As to shorten the story, we effectively parlayed that and moved into Riverhead when we acquired what was then the Best Western at Exit 72. And we acquired that hotel on the basis of our intended development of the Holiday Inn Express and Suites 58, which was going to be the second flagged hotel and first new hotel in Riverhead, and this became my life's work. So, 20 years, I believe we've been adopted by most of the East End, and we're happy and proud of that. We've gotten to know friends from the Hamptons, friends from the North Fork, were a big part of the Riverhead community. Indigo was a conversion, Hotel Indigo was a conversion in 2010, which represented our vision for the first stage of that property that we liked, and it was significant. We ended up effectively taking the hotel down to the bricks and bringing it back as what we now call a soft brand hotel with a focus on local neighborhood, community feel, and so local food sourcing, local wines, design that appeals to anybody who visits the area, and that leads us here. So, I would say to you, having been out here so long, it's long been a vision or a hope of mine that I might have the opportunity, a first individually, now with partners, to develop something in the Hamptons, but in particular, the Bays. As I've, so many friends here, so much time spent in what I like to call our vertical, from the Bays up to Bating Hollow, is, I've always believed it's been great to us in Riverhead, it's a great opportunity. And so, this situation presented itself, and we thought, similar to what we've done at Hotel Indigo, but appropriately scaled for the community, would be well received, would be a benefit to your community. You look at the world-class golf clubs, the catering facilities, you look at the resident needs for visitors and the like, not everybody wants people at their house. And I know these things because all of your business, or most of your business, comes to my hotel in Riverhead. And so, this conversation started back originally with the diner site, as you know. And we come here today and we think this is an ideally sized piece of property. We think the scope of what we hope to achieve with 68 units is appropriate for the market conditions. We think we scaled, we think the traffic fits, and we can detail all of that, but that's sort of the high level of what we're hoping to achieve.
I have one question, this is probably a property owner question, because a lot of this stems back to, a lot of the comments that I've seen on social media are in response to taking away the Boardy Barn. Now, as a property owner, this isn't a hotel or the Boardy Barn, correct?
When you say, like, will the Boardy Barn...
Like, this is not, like, you did not buy that property in order to keep the barn open?
We did not.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there, because it's a lot of people think that this is a this or that question, and...
It isn't, and that represented the Vona family, which is the other ownership family, and their intent was to do a hotel. So, the, I think, one of the big points that came up, I think when you were talking to the community, was could this, if it doesn't succeed, and I think you just heard why it will succeed, and based on experience, but if it were not to succeed, could we turn this into some sort of residential housing? So, I'd ask Rob just to address that part of it.
Yes, happy to do that, it's in here as well. Couple considerations, we're looking at upwards of a $20 million investment that we will be required to personally guarantee. So, as I said to your community, and I've said to every community I've worked with for 25 years, you don't win, we don't win. Our success starts with our community, if the community believes in a facility, we've seen them win, I've seen the community, I've worked and consulted for hotels that weren't connected with the community, and I've seen them fail. It's that simple. So, it's got to start right there, but we have that financial guarantee, and it's not unsubstantial. We, as we've considered this, so many hotel years will look at our seasonal market and say, well, we don't want to be open all year, we just want to be open when we can make money and we want to shut down, so we'll build a private enterprise and that'll be good, we'll make the most money. Well, it doesn't always work that way, and you've seen, you've learned the hard way here with some of your motels that originally started out as good ideas for seasonal use, we even saw it in Riverhead. Our commitment from the beginning was to align ourselves, what we believe is the best hotel company in the business, in Hilton. They have requirements of us, same as we are required a person to guarantee our success to the bank. They will have, they have very strict quality assurance standards, they inspect us twice annually, they require us to make FFNE upgrade investments every seven years and not insignificant investments. So, we have Hilton worldwide reputation to maintain, our family reputations to maintain as Long Island residents, Brian's family, I don't want to speak for you, but property owners and quod. And we have to make the bank happy, or they take it from us. So, this is not, a couple of the residents asked, do you intend to house people there as a means of success for your business? Absolutely not. That is not good for our business, it presents severe legal ramifications, and we've learned, even when we've not intended to house people, people have snuck in on us once or twice out of 20 years. It's not a process we want, it's not good for business, it's not good for the community, as I said. And so, our, this is to be a transient facility boutique in nature and representative of the community.
Mr. Solotico, so you came in and you met with me and Councilwoman McNamara, I think, last year, and you talked about this project, and one of the things that you really emphasize, which I think is really important, is that although this is going to be a Hilton, the branding is not really going to be front and center, everything is going to sort of be in the background so that it conforms really within the character of the community. Can you just discuss a little bit of that? Because I think that's really important when you look at development across Southampton. You know, a lot of people are concerned that, oh, well, like, for instance, McDonald's in Southampton, like, people freaked out about that, right? And it's very controversial. But one of the things that you're doing is you're taking that and you're putting in the background, right? So, I wanted to see if you could kind of talk a little bit about that.
The concept of soft brand hotels is specifically for this purpose. Very short story, 20 years ago, I had one of the senior sales reps from IHG out here, and I gave him the tour of the South Fork and the North Fork in full, and then we went back to our hotel. And I said, you know what you guys are missing? This was not my idea, they had it on their own, but I said, you never get behind any of these small hotels. The power of your sales and marketing, the power of your quality assurance would be great, but you guys always want 100 units or better, something has to happen one day. And it was just, you know, spitballing back and forth, but the hotels, companies obviously figured out that there's an opportunity for them, and there's a need for exactly what we're telling you. And, yeah, we don't, it's not attractive to bring in the stucco hotel with the $60,000 worth of signage. We want the boutique feel, we want the structure, we want the training, they bring our staff. So, this is, we are open to your, I don't, forgive me for not knowing this, if you have an ARB or not, but we want community input, we want local design. Our first iteration on the diner was actually going to keep the front look of the Hampton Bay's diner for the F and B space, and then with, you know, a more modestly styled hotel attached to it. So, this is wherever my picture went. You know, Parish Arts Museum, you know, Hampton's barn type feel, that's a win. I'm sorry.
No, please.
Finish this off by saying, our customers want that. If they can get a little taste of what it is, they'll, I hate to say this, but they'll pay more for authenticity, and they'll appreciate it better, so we want what you want.
Can we talk about your customers for a little bit?
Sure.
Now, you're, when you spoke with us, one of the things that you mentioned is the limits of hotels, right? There are some limitations, a lot of them are very expensive. How do you imagine this sort of fitting into sort of the scheme of affordability? Or is this going to be competitive? Are you going to be, you know, trying to provide some opportunities for people that, you know, are going to have family out for a week or something like that, and, you know, might not be able to afford a more, you know, expensive hotel? Like, is this, how does this fit into that?
So, candidly, weekend, summer, let's call it the 100 days of the summer pays all the bills. It ensures that we don't fail and don't end up in that bad position. So, I cannot sit here and give you sort of a whitewashed, oh, don't worry, we'll be cheaper. The summers are expensive, the weekdays tend to be less expensive, it's really the Fridays and Saturdays are where you see the big sticker shop prices. But that's, we're talking about, if you look at summer weekdays and if you look at the shoulder seasons, we're talking 85% of the year, it's, pricing is modest, will never go too low, when I say too low, I mean too low, you know, sub 100, because that's when you start to attract trouble, and that's when you start to attract people who say, oh, I can make this residence, as long as, you know, I'll stay for 30 days for $100 a night, and then I'll claim residency and so on and so forth, or the wrong type of traffic. But I would say 85% of the year, it would fit well within the budget of anybody who can afford a, I like to use the term three and a half stars, we will offer a four-star level of service, but when you look at the physical construct of this hotel, it will never qualify for that fourth star with the triple A's or the Michelin's of the world. But we need to price accordingly to support the image for the community, to deliver to the customers that we expect to bring in, we think who has interest. But I would say 85% of the year, it'll fall in line with most hotels, and while I don't have a specific plan, we will have a locals discount. There will be something, we have thoughts, I'd rather not just waste everybody's time, but we'll come up with some specific, if you're a Hampton Bays Association member or a resident, you're entitled to an additional 10 or 15%.
That being said, it'll still be cheaper if, let's just say, you're going to an event at CPI, and you can't afford to rent one of the cottages there, it'll be way cheaper.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it is so because 68 units is greater scale than 25 units. We can, and we need that to accommodate the groups that CPI, for a CPI wedding, for a Sabonic wedding, 25 units is not even one group, so it becomes difficult. In this case, with the greater amount of units, we can afford to offer a group rate, it's win-win customer and hotel. So, yes, by unit count alone, we'll be able to accommodate a better price, significantly better price than CPI.
So, Janice, what has to happen in order to accomplish this, if the board's inclined to do so?
So, 33141 is the code that governs motel and hotel transient, special exception. And right now, the code says that there shall be no less than 11,000 square feet of lot area for each guest unit. In this case, that would equal 10 guest units. So, that metric, that 11,000 square feet per unit would have to be changed. So, I did a search of all different codes, you know, in New York and in other places, and initially, I think I put in my, you know, notes here that, you know, 1,800, believe it or not, is like a, you know, common number, some of them were in the 3,000's, I think 1,800. But when I just did the math now, if you did, so their lot area is 112, 112,616 square feet, and if you divided that by 1,800, you would only get 62 units. However, that's between 10 and 62, that's a 52-unit difference, so you would be, I don't know if you can achieve the, because again, you're doing this across the board. So, you're saying, you have to come up with a number. I think 1,800 is a fair number, because that was a number I saw in many, many places that already have this code. So, but that doesn't mean there's some special science behind the number. So, you have to come up with a number, or you just strike that out entirely. But if, how else would we tell how many units you're entitled to if we didn't use lot area as the way to tell?
Wouldn't it just make sense for it to be before the ZBA?
No. Because now you're making them have to get relief, that is a huge difference. So, that wouldn't be, you know, that would be very significant.
But Janice, we're a tourist economy, like, why doesn't, why don't we have a code that is more...
I think it was done by design, Dave's been here a lot longer than me, probably say, is the town attorney's office, why that code was...
I mean, highway business, right? You would think...
Or anywhere, no, and it's not even allowed in highway business.
It's prohibited.
Well, I know, but because we just had one that changed, it's still non-conforming, but...
Was it some idea that...
This code, and this part of the code was adopted in the 50's, right? Initiation of zoning, and, you know, I think if you reflect back on any of the hotels that have been developed, they had some sort of pre-existing non-conforming right or other right that they were able to leverage. So, if you think about the Topping Rose House, that was a pre-existing non-conforming use. CPI had its pre-existing non-conforming use, and the other, the other benefits that came to that property. So, you haven't seen any hotels developed here since the 50's that didn't have those pre-existing non-conforming rights. And it's really created a dearth in affordable rooms. I think what we've had, and you see the transitioning from that traditional Hampton Bay's cottage, and they all went condo, or even got sold, to nothing, right? Nothing's being developed to house travelers. Your 1999 comprehensive plan update screamed out for this type of development. I think, you know, in my history, I've seen the bed and breakfast, everybody thought that was the answer in the 2000's, but that has not really gotten any legs, nobody really wants to undertake that. I was involved many years ago with a different owner that's there now at the Southampton Inn, and there was the Village Latch next door, and there was talk about developing one or the other with a major brand or putting them together. Could never get the two owners together, and the larger hotels walked away from it because it wasn't enough units. Of course, there wasn't the soft brand that I've now become introduced to, Rob, when that happened, but it, that demonstrates the challenges. But, you know, I think your code needs to be tweaked or updated to meet today's needs.
Could the code indicate the importance of soft branding? I mean, I know that's sort of an aesthetic thing, but I think that it's sort of in line with the community's interest.
So, yes, so, let me just go in order here of, you know, how it can be amended. So, the first thing is just A would be of 33141, you'd have to change that 11,000 square foot metric. I was finding 1,800 as a standard a lot, that would reduce the amount here, but you may, you are doing this across the board, so, you know, you have to come up with a metric that you feel comfortable with. You know, the other ones like B and C are just about sanitary waste, we all know that that's still required, that wouldn't change, no outdoor, you know, lighting, and, you know, those kinds of things would all be fine. In this case, we would add, I think, a room size and design, I don't know what size rooms you're talking, you would have.
So, please don't hold me to these numbers, but just conversationally, 48 rooms at around 320 square feet.
So, yeah, I had 300, because that's where I found a lot of codes talking about, at least, because they don't want to cram in a ton of little teeny rooms. So, you want to say at least 300 square feet, and that would work for your purposes, and I think that provides for...
We would set the minimum.
You set the minimum, I think I found a lot of 300's in codes around...
I mean, I think updating the code, I mean, if you look at it, I mean, that code is what basically got us down the path of these motels that became efficiency apartments by nature of not having enough rooms in order to be sustainable as a hotel.
Right.
And then we also now have Airbnbs, which people don't want in their neighborhoods because there's nowhere to stay, so...
So, I think, and it says, you know, just adding that standard room size and design as a parameter.
You could do a percentage, like, you could have somewhere percent of 300 and a percent of 400.
They could be bigger, no problem, but it's the smaller, you don't want to have a lot of little teeny...
That's what I say, you can only have so many small ones paired to the big ones.
Right, well, just that, you know, across the board, at least 300 was a standard I felt, you know, I wanted to check, I wasn't sure it was.
Yeah, that's pretty much an industry standard.
Okay, yeah, you weren't planning on smaller. Building design, to your point, Councilwoman Isley, that we would put in some design parameters, so, like, building mass, de-emphasized in a variety of ways through architectural details such as divisions, breaks in materials, windows, variation of roofline, awnings, you know, that kind of thing. So, you put a standard, there's no such standard now, a clear delineation, you know, so we add, like, you know, some architectural standards in there, formula or franchise designs being restricted, I think that's really what you're trying to say. To the extent that any proposed elevation that doesn't achieve a traditional looking character should not be approved, and then it kind of defy, I kind of agglomerated all these things and I have to fix it into a code if that's how you want to go forward, but in anticipation of you asking me, I added this.
Thank you.
You know, just, again, more architectural standards about the materials, you know, wood, cedar, shingle, stone, brick, you know, those kinds of native, you know, need it. You know, fencing berms, vegetation screening, you know, street trees, this is just showing that, but I would say on the corridor here, we have a corridor study in Hampton Bays that requires certain vegetation along the Motelk Highway, so we would want to see those street trees there. Again, there's a section I would put in about, you know, no more than 30 consecutive days, like, really defining that transient into the code. We have some definitions, but just putting it in the standard here, because the special exception standards, they do have to, I'm sorry, they do have to sign affidavits that they will comply, so it's helpful for if there's any non-compliance in a justice court scenario. Just stuff about promotional signage, accessory uses customarily related to a hotel such as food service, hotel bar, spa beauty, personal service, maybe permitted, provided adequate parking is provided. I think if you're going to open that up to, like, they had mentioned, I was at the Civic Association meeting, CAC, said, you know, hey, this would be great because people can come for brunch or come to the restaurant or whatever, but we need to make sure that anybody who does this, there's adequate parking, if you're going to have it outside of the hotel guests only.
One of the things that the CAC's kept telling us to make it bigger and give more services, right? So, it was, it was an interesting, I didn't think that would be the outcome, but that was one of the...
Yeah, you were pleasantly surprised.
Yes, I was, I was. But we'll work on that.
What else, Janice?
That this, anything over 50 units would be a type one action, we're familiar now, talking about battery storage, we would amend the chapter 157, so anything more than 50 units, like 50 parking spaces, which this would probably have, if you have more than 50 units, it's automatically a type one action, which means that we have a stringent review and make sure that traffic and all the rest of the, you know, requirements are met. The table of uses, it's an X in highway business, so you have to change that to SE, and the things I'm talking about are those SE standards. And then there's a separate section of the code, 33105K, and this says that this code restricts building size in highway business of 15,000 square feet, however, there's exceptions in that code, and you could add an exception for hotels if you want to. Like, we also have an exception for assisted living, because they are allowed in highway business. So, you would have to add a number four to 33105K and say hotels, so that they're not restricted, because this is obviously bigger than 15,000. Normally, in highway business, people have to go to the ZBA and make a showing that they could subdivide the parcel and they could have two 15,000's anyway and just let us put it together, that kind of thing. But here, I think if you want to see this happen, you would just, you could allow for it, or we could come up with some other way, if that's not the way, but I would recommend that be the way to do it. And that's really it, just about.
You're protected in that through the amount of units that you get for the lot area.
Right, so it can't exceed, because you've still got a functionality, like I said, the 1,800, or whatever number you choose, it's only one guest unit per whatever that number is, so that's a function of lot size, so you're not going to get some mega building, you know?
I wouldn't want to see kitchenettes in the units, you're not planning on that. Could we put that in there that does, you know, kitchenettes?
Sure, I could put that under, after the transient section, because that is not the same thing. Actually, it's already restricted because this is motel hotel transient, we have hotel motel resort, and those resort ones have... And those resort ones have the kitchenettes, but the transient ones don't. We already have that defined in our code, believe it or not. Years ago, I did this whole hotel study and.
Hot plate theories way back when.
Yeah, so, um, those are really, you know, the changes. It's just amending those special exception standards, amending the table of uses, coming up with a metric of the lot area consideration per guest unit and amending three thirty one oh five K. So that would be how you do.
Well, I think it's, you know, very much needed and it goes hand in hand with, we're planning some features for a downtown revitalization in Hampton Bays, working on a sewer treatment plant. And, uh, you know, some changes to the downtown, so this seems like a really good idea to me.
My only suggestion is as you move along in this process, that you continue to stay connected with the Hampton Bay Civic and let them know and and you know, if there's any sort of changes that are made, um, you know, obviously keep us in the loop, but if you could continue to communication with them, that would be great.
It was just this week, I think, that Marriott picked up a small chain of boutique type motels, hotels just for this reason, to go into areas that weren't suitable for a large scale hotel. So it makes sense, I mean, I I've gotten a few questions about it, the design for the canopy in the front. Why isn't it a little more traditional? You know, I know you're referencing back to the Paris Art Museum, but it just seems.
We're pretty open on design.
Might be too rich hampton watermelon.
I I agree, I'd rather have something a little more.
Indicate our interest in serving, in in matching the community and not to show you the Holiday Inn Express. So we're very flexible.
Oh, good.
Yeah, but I do like what you did at Indigo too, that really became a place to go, the restaurant's beautiful, you know, the bar. You have a lot of special events there.
Yeah, I was just there for Hampton Bays.
Yeah, do you, and outside too, there, I've been to car shows and other things outside. So are you planning on doing that here or is that a way to make additional funds or?
I love the live music angle. We found that it's part of the East End DNA, as I like to tell people, and it gives the guests or locals who want to come for drink or buy something to do. We're not asking you to leave the table in an hour mentality, so.
We're given that you're, you seem to be aesthetically calling the Parish Art Museum maybe some art shows.
That stuff is is great for us, we used to do so much more at Indigo. And then COVID just literally dropped a wet towel on all of it because you're saying we don't want to bring all these people together. So we're just now starting to integrate that back, but music never left. We're, and this is not an advertisement for Indigo, but four days a week, our community, your community knows they can come by us and catch a guitar player or duo act and have a drink and hang out and it's win-win.
So do you have event space, wedding space here?
No, this would be at most, um, small meeting room to accommodate local. But we get those requests all the time, you have a place for twenty five of us to get together, have a meeting, stay over. And that'll help us on the Monday to Thursday business, eighty five percent of the year, when we'd love to have everybody come. It's a draw for that purpose.
Yeah, I mean, I've been around long enough, I remember the sixties and the hotel motel capacity back then is greater than it is now. So something like this would be, I think, fit very well into the Hampton Bays downtown. Uh, and to have a year round and a place, because a lot closes up in the wintertime, a place to go in the wintertime would be nice. Especially if it's priced accordingly, you know, we have a couple of the, you know, family heritage motels that have done very well over the years. I don't think this is going to hurt them and CPI is so high on the scale, you know, it's a different clientele. If myself, being involved with the San Gennaro Feast, we bring in entertainers from all over the country, we're sending them to you. And we're paying for you to house them because we don't have a place to do it locally. So it would be great to, you know, be able to have your son's wedding back in Hampton Bays and people could stay here and so on and so forth. So I look forward to how this progresses.
Not having to send family to Riverhead, you know.
Yep.
I think it's a good move.
And your pilots, don't underestimate how many of them have to come to Riverhead and stay at our hotels. They're right here, they're they're great, they have their layover, they shop, they eat, they, so they should be back in your community.
Yeah, we did just adopt a pattern book for Hampton Bays, it doesn't extend down to this area, right? But you could take a look at that just to get a sense of what the the board likes.
More nautical, right though?
More nautical, proficient boat out front like Captain.
Well, they do like the baymen, you know, we were talking about putting a statue of the baymen at somewhere.
So I know the elevation is a problem between that and the shopping center, is there any cross access for traffic to come out on the light there?
I I think that's going to be tough if you if you think about that.
To a point.
We talked about that during cross action to the King Calamore.
If you if you looked at it, there is a, there is a pretty big separation. Great, but we have a great engineer who, if it can be worked out and and that's always one of the big issues that you deal with in site planning, with the planning board is cross access.
It would be great if that could be explored.
Especially because that section of the lot over there by by wild by nature is kind of underutilized as it is, so. Especially if you're going to start having, you know, loud music or.
I think the, I don't know who owns that now, but it was the Martin Rono family who owned the King Colin lot. And I don't know if they ever wanted a cross access at the boardy barn, but it may be a good time to bring it in now.
Never hurts to ask.
And everybody found their way there to the shopping center.
So what's, it sounds like everybody's in favor of the.
Draft up a resolution with these changes I mentioned and you can debate it as a local law.
Thank you.
And I mean, it's going to be more of a, it's not going to be a just for this, so I mean, it's going to be a broader for the whole town to come and weigh in at a public hearing and.
Yeah, yeah.
What would it do to like, uh, the ones on thirty nine, would it bring those into more of a compliance, right?
It would, they would not be nonconforming.
Now that we changed the zone to highway business.
Oh, those, I thought you meant like the Atlantic.
The Atlantic and the, yeah.
The Atlantic wasn't.
And the Bentley.
Oh, it is highly, it's the Atlantic.
Bentley.
Oh, the Bentley, oh, oh, yes. Well, it would be also conforming in highway business, so it would not be now. So that's good.
That helps with their own financing.
It does, it really helps with being able to operate.
Things, I can see that, that you have a conforming use when they're financing.
So, okay, I will put this forward and any all co-sponsors or? Yes, okay, great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Again, easier than you thought, probably, right?
We did have a preview having.
Thanks, Janice, we'll see you in executive.
Excuse me, no, we're not, we're right on time.
I saw him a few years back at the diner in Comac one day. He's always such a gentleman.
Hey, Janice, can you go ahead and help other people come in? Thank you.
We might have a bigger group coming in now too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Instead had a, instead had an auto leasing company.
How are you?
Let's do something, yes. So we built it too. How are you? Yeah, how are you?
How are you, Mayor?
Good morning or afternoon?
Nice to see you there at the perch, very nice.
Got new chairs for us.
For your homecoming, right?
Mr. Winez, come on up. Who do you want to come up with you?
The usual spot.
Bill wants to come up.
Get Mayor Manger.
We sat together for twenty five years ago.
Come on down, sure.
Because this is really the five oh one C three's presentation.
So I was going to call the cops, so this guy walking the streets here.
Either way.
Yeah, he was he was good at town, but he got switched.
All right, so our next item is the proposal of Southampton Windmill. We're going to hear from Julie Green, our town historian, and Roy Wine, Southampton Windmill Media Center. And we also have our mayor, Manger, here and. Oh, oh, Alan.
He's in our planning board.
All the troops are behind us.
Hey, hello to the troops, okay. Oh, and I see Joe McLaughlin here, hi, Joe, is one of our town trustees, former village trustee. Thanks for coming. All right, so you wanted to talk to us about the history of the windmill, Julie and.
So I'll just give a quick background, I did a, there is a thirty page report that you now have, we won't get into all that minutia. But just to kind of reiterate the importance of this windmill. So, um, for the most part, over the last two centuries, we regard windmills as charming remnants of our agrarian beginnings. Uh, but during the colonial era, the windmill reigned supreme, performing tasks of grinding grain, sawing wood, pumping water, all essential for survival. However, the seventeenth century records of the town are a little skimpy, the talks of mills is a little bit scarce. So the next mention, um, we have some mentions in the early sixteen forties, fifties, um, mostly of water mills. Uh, but the next mention of a windmill in the Southampton Town Records is in book two. Um, and it's in April sixth, sixteen ninety seven, when Meneses Kempton, who was a blacksmith, he was also the town sealer of weights and measurements. So he kind of kept make sure that people were honest, their links in their for their rods and all that and their weights were all legit. Um, so he was given the right to, uh, the liberty to set up a windmill. So this is the oldest surviving windmill in the town and it was located on the southwest corner of Windmill Lane in Hill Street. So there are newer structures there, so it was up on the hill, um, at the very end, the southern end of Windmill Lane.
So across from the monument?
Yes, yes, yeah, the triangle, so yeah.
That's why it's called Hill Street.
Yeah, makes sense. So just.
Times were uncomplicated.
So just east of like the theater.
Okay.
It was right up in there, maybe even that whole property was where the mill, where the mill stood. Uh, it was not only an indispensable utility grinding grain for the inhabitants, but was also far more prominent. And, uh, was by far the most prominent and picturesque, um, object in the village. And it held status in the village because of that. Um, this is where the inhabitants, you would get your grains, um, you would harvest all of your things and you would bring them to the miller and the miller would take care of grinding them down. The miller usually got ten percent of what they ground and, um, the inhabitants would take, which, and which they could do with what they'd like. They could sell it, they could use it for their own families, um, but this is the way the town settled itself. Every settlement needed these these different things to, in order to survive and and to make it as a settlement. So this is one of the, um, one of the ones that was in the village that was very, very important. And I, just as an example of what windmills mean to villagers and to the inhabitants. So the BB windmill, which was built in eighteen twenty in Sag Harbor Village, which is now in the Hamlet of Bridgehampton, it was moved in eighteen thirty six. But when it was in the village of Sag Harbor, it had the motto, I guess, for lack of a better term, um, it was called the flag on, flag on the mill ship in the bay. So not only did it grind grain for the inhabitants, but they would put a, um, a flag up on top of the mill, which alerted the villagers that a ship was in the bay. So you know, during the whaling era, ships would go out for three, four years at a time.
We're, and sorry, we're talking about the same windmill.
No, no, this is the, this was the BB windmill, which is now in Bridgehampton, sorry, just using this as an example. Which, um, they're doing the core with one and watermill, yeah. So we have quite a few windmills, um, but just the importance to the, not only where they, do they use it for grain, but they also use it as a signal in the village of the, of what was going on. So these mills, you know, you could see this one in sixteen ninety seven from the beach, you could see it right across Lake Agawam. Um, so it has quite a bit of significance. And the only reason that it was moved to Shunakok Hills where it stands today is that it was going to be torn down. It was going to be demolished in eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty nine. They were doing a lot of filling in, um, for Lake Agawam and, um, they had no use for it at the time, the miller. Uh, the gentleman that owned it wanted to demolish it. So, uh, the Hoyt family, who were developing Shunakok Hills, um, thought, uh, this would be a great thing to move. Um, and they built a cottage.
Did they sell it to the?
The Hoyts, the Hoyts bought it.
So the owner sold it to the Hoyts in eighteen eighty nine?
Eighteen eighty nine, um, and on page five is the picture, um, of when it was first moved to, um, where it is today, um, attached to a different cottage, um, this cottage burned down a few years later. Um, but the windmill, uh, survived the fire. And then, um, in eighteen ninety eight, the Claflin family bought it, um, and built the big, um, their big mansion, which they called Heathermere, which is now the administration building. Um, and I also just, um, so, so you know, from sixteen ninety seven, there's talks that this built, mill was built in seventeen twelve, but we know in seventeen twelve that, so Meneses Kempton was given the right to build a mill in sixteen ninety seven. And then in seventeen twelve, he sold half of it to another gentleman, another settler here in the village. So we know that it was in existence, there was talk of another mill being set, um, as well by three other gentlemen. We don't know if that mill ever came to fruition, however, uh, we do know that if you had a hill and there was wind, they were setting up mills all over the place. Um, and and we do have a few that survive. I just want to mention that they got moved all the time. We've, we have numerous mills that every, there's not a single mill that's in this town that's where it was when it was first built. The BB windmill in Bridgehampton's been moved four times. Uh, the mill that, there was a mill, um, just down, it's called Windmill Lane because it had more than one windmill on it. Um, there was another one that was further down on the northern end, um, if you look on page three, there's a map. Um, I don't know if you can quite see it, but what is technically seen is there's like a kind of a triangle. So that, so this mill, the old mill on Mill Hill is the one circled in red. And if you look just to the, just up a bit, you can see there's another little denotation for a windmill. That windmill got moved to Wayne Scott. And I know there's talk of using the property across from the library. So this, the windmill that got moved to Wayne Scott, actually at the turn of the twentieth century, was the Wayne Scott branch of the Hampton Library in Bridgehampton. So they all have repurposed, um, they've all been repurposed, reused, a lot of them have been moved on to private properties. And I like the fact that we keep this one here in Southampton, so, um, we have a couple of them in the town of East Hampton, um, currently. Um, and I also wanted to add that in, on the last couple of pages, it's just a little addendum. In nineteen twenty four and nineteen twenty eight, um, the Claflin family offered it to the village. Um, and the village, um, wasn't able to come up with a location. This mill being brought back, but just, so a hundred years later, we got here again. So, um, uh, save the mill, landmark the mill and I'll leave it to. Talk about its next.
The interesting part about this is at the time where the vacant property is across from the library was a operating, uh, a gas station. And it was taken away and now we have a nice green bill. Bringing back a mill that was originally on that road would be very unique. Because as mentioned, they've all been relocated to different spots, this would be the one that would come back. It also would be the start of your tour, as you're going down the main roads and work your way into Watermill, to Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor, to East Hampton. Now there's a consistency for the east end of Long Island. And that's probably one of the unique things that can be offered to this part of the country.
Where would you guys put it in? Because people probably not, did not hear that.
Right across from the library.
Which is CPF property.
Right, which is Julie.
Is the origin of the windmill?
Windmill.
So for the first time, and this is kinda unique, because Bill and I were, five years ago when CPF came up, we were involved with the initial funding. The message of property between the villages and town brought a great start to come back at this time with us and revisit and put some history together and let everybody see it for a change. Because it's out of sight where it is. It had all good intentions by the time it moved up there. But that was then, and to start over again and put some history back together would be beautiful. And there's much more chance of survival in that location.
And people get to enjoy it.
You didn't finish the story. I mean, so you stopped at, the Hoyts sold it to the Claflin family. I mean, because it's still owned, you know, it was owned by, and now owned by the college.
Right, so from eighteen, so eighteen, so sixteen ninety-seven to eighteen ninety-nine, it was a utilitarian structure. That's all it did was grind grain. And then when it was moved in eighteen eighty-nine to now to two thousand twenty-five, it's had a wide variety of ownership and uses. So we had, it was, so the Claflins owned it till nineteen fifty, and then it was the Tucker Mill Inn. So the main house was the inn, the windmill was kind of, it's following and attracting good guests. The Claflin family had restored the interior of the mill, from what I understand, I've not been inside, but restored it more as a cottage for their daughter to use. So the interior, I don't think there's anything interior structural that's of windmill, of any of the gears or those types of things. But then it's been, so, you know, we took, it's been now three college institutions, so it's still now
I mean, I love the idea of kids sitting in the library and looking out at the windmill and hearing the story of the windmill on Windmill Lane and the whole, you know, coming full circle. But I think our issue is, it's owned by the college, and I don't think they have an offer on the table to give it to the village or the town. Right?
I don't.
Well, the history, which I know from Porter Bibb who's worked on it forever, the late, he's tried often with the trustees of, not the LIU college, but after oh eight, transferred to ownership by Stony Brook for the new campus with all the issues of what happens to the campus. It's sort of been abandoned.
I mean, I'm personally, and I'm just talking for myself, I don't, I'm not comfortable using CPF money to rehab it at the college without ownership of it or the land that it sits on. I don't feel that that's appropriate. And so then the next question is, is the college going to fund the restoration at the college?
Our history, which is, if you can, there's about five mayors, I think, have worked on it. Many have talked to me over the past, I'm just a bystander, I just hear these tales. Five hundred thousand was appropriated of taxpayers' money four or five years ago to renovate it, and there is no evidence of where it went. And the LIU, the college has been under some duress. I mean, you're probably gonna face a lot of issues over there, but the windmill just sits there abandoned. No one sees it. It's got historic memory for some people who went to the college, can have their reunions even if it moves back to the village.
But so that's my question, like, how do we facilitate?
It may not be legal, I'm told, for the CPF to even renovate it, because they need a special law to renovate a building.
Well, the windmill in West Hampton, we have ownership, we have joint ownership of the windmill, and we also have joint ownership of the land that it sits on.
The law was written last year, says that some land will be
Yeah.
Set aside and given to you guys.
Set long-term lease for
And lease it to you and do union work and fix that also. But it's a complicated arrangement, just sort of preserve it. But it needs in this, according to the law, I think, with this CPF, which has been copied throughout the state, it needs a certification from an expert.
Landmark. Yeah, would need landmark designation. Landmarks board here.
For funding.
A couple of steps before it even gets to the town taking charge and fixing it and renovating it and using all the union, like, all that stuff.
But that doesn't, but if we were to designate it with historic designation, it just simply greenlights the funding. It doesn't necessarily change the ownership structure.
No, no. We have to, we have to go
To the governor.
Yeah, state. And see if we can get it. Because we can't really go up there at night and just take it.
Well, I think, I think, I think he has a plan to do that.
He's got the stones too. He's got the biggest truck.
Everything in oh eight was granted, the college disappeared in effect. It's owned by the governor.
Well, I mean, that's my whole thing, is not knowing what's going on at that college and what's being built there and what's, I mean, I would like to see the windmill have a permanent home where it's gonna be maintained. And I mean, you haven't gotten into any of the finances that you guys have raised and
Which is very important, because it's personal, it's not taxpayer, any municipal monies, it's, the taxpayer's not involved here. We have private funding.
I do wanna just correct the record about the college, because they're actively, you know, they appointed a woman, Wendy Pearson, who's, you know, put together a group of stakeholders, and they meet, I'm part of it, so is the mayor. We meet every month to talk about, you know, the direction of the college, and they're looking, you know, at some point the hospital, I don't know if that's gonna happen, but, you know, and some affordable housing, but to bring back classes and what's to be offered. So I know they are trying to revitalize the campus.
It was a big, major effort, absolutely. Where the windmill fits in is sort of a footnote.
Right, and what, and your line item, what's your highest priority to where the windmill is? I think the windmill sits at the lower level. I don't think it's their first priority
No.
To bring the campus around. And if that's the case, more time will go by. And when will the, all eyes go onto that project? Whereas right now, we have active money and a lot of enthusiastic people that have feelings to see this thing become part of a daily visual appearance, you know, to fit to the public to go drive by every day. Whereas it's out of sight up there.
Did you ask the college, or, I mean, I don't know who owns the state, if they would transfer the windmill to the village?
Well, we're trying to find out where we sit between village and town when we approach the state.
I think they're looking for us to either write a letter in support or join with them in exing the governor and the person who runs the college, permission to, to have it moved and take ownership of the windmill, the foundation. I think the stones are very important to come with it. And any, you know, thing up the site where it is and move it down to its new home.
I was given the impression that from the state level, the onus was gonna be on the town and the village to deal with maintenance up there.
So mayor, you've brought this to my attention at a couple of one-on-ones that we've had. Has the village issued any sort of letter to the state about this yet?
No, we have not.
Oh, okay.
No, if it, when it gets done, it should be done as a joint.
Well, you know, when, we were asked last year if we would fund the renovations of the windmill. And at that point, I had said, well, you know, in West Hampton Beach, there was the same issue with the windmill was owned by the village, but they were looking for money from the town for historic preservation, and the town said, we need to own it jointly. There has to be joint ownership, and then we'll fund it. So that's what happened. And when I suggested that we treat this the same way, when we were asked to support it, I said the same thing. And then our CPF director and attorney went and, they went and had some discussions, and there was, but I haven't been involved after that, and there was something about a long-term lease of the land that it's on, which isn't really my concern, I'm just concerned with the structure itself.
The unique part about this is, there's a third party involved, is with private funding. And that probably is different than what we experienced.
Is it West Hampton?
Well, West Hampton wasn't private funding.
No, no, but the windmill sits on village property.
And town property.
Town property.
This windmill sits on state property. That's the biggest problem. You know, the town's gonna dump a million bucks in and fixing it up, who's gonna maintain it? And then they'll be back here another twenty years for us to do it again, because no one took care of it.
Julie, if, if we were to designate it historically, are we able to move that after it's designated? Wasn't there a restriction of like when you designate it and where it is?
Right, but all of the windmills that have been designated as landmarks have been moved. So the BB's a national landmark, it's been moved four times.
But we did with the West Hampton, we landmarked it and then moved it.
And just now with the Dix windmill, which was on private property, we landmarked it and then moved it.
Yeah, they moved it first, they moved it first, because they didn't want the, in West Hampton, they didn't want the owners to have to have it forever, because they didn't want it. So we landmarked it, while they owned it, so then the transfer of ownership happened after it got moved and then
I think about a unique situation, and that's back when, maybe five years ago, we were on the board, and we had to address the firehouse in the village, but at the firehouse, constructed on the town property. And it was very interesting how the two agencies had to work in, businesses on the village, even though it's on, and it's treated as the expense of the village. And that's the problem we had, even going with the village into the Watermill, trying to put up a firehouse, and we're dealing with now a new committee, commissioners, it's Bill, your aunt, my son's aunt, and I'm on the other side of the fence here with Bill. The interesting move, so
I was on the commission. Because I moved out of town. I removed that district here from Iowa.
Also, I'd like to add to your point regarding historic designation, that it's the windmill itself, the structure, that's a more prominent historic structure, not the grounds that it's sitting on presently. And if anything, as far as the history that Julie just mentioned, because of where it was originated and how many years it sat in the village of Southampton, it's actually has more of a Southampton village prominence as far as history, its history is concerned, versus the college site. As Julie mentioned, the windmills constantly get moved around. And to that point, when we, I was the planning commissioner of Southampton, we did a master plan for the village commercial business district. And as part of that, we did designate the park at the time to be the site for the relocation of that windmill. Of course, this was preliminary site planning and master planning, without going through the details of how it would happen at the time. But we designated it at that time, this is two thousand thirteen. I, since then, I have, I'm an architect. I have been practicing for close to forty years, thirty years within Southampton Village. We have visited the windmill on three different occasions. We've surveyed it in detail. Structurally, actually compared to many more windmills that we have out east. It's a pretty good shape, because it's constantly gotten attention and been used, actually, as a residence at some point and so on. And so structurally, actually, it's in pretty good shape. Yes, it does need to be refinished with its exterior and windows and so forth, to be improved, but it's a stable structure. And we even looked into how it would be moved, in what stages and capacity, where basically the cap of it would be removed as one section, the body of it another, and then the base of it, which is a stone base, we could actually either partially relocate it or actually build that onsite and then move the windmill on it.
So I would just, I would just say that, I mean, for me, if, I'm happy to sign on to a letter. Obviously, there needs to be this ownership thing worked out, so I think that's the first step, and I'd be happy to support it if that's what the community's interest is indicating.
Yeah, I think there's great interest in the village to have the windmill back in the village itself. I mean, and again, it's great that this group has come together and raised the money, not only to move it, but actually to restore it, and then actually look after it, maintenance-wise, into the future. Because the issue I see now is that there's always, well, who's gonna take care of it, and while we're waiting, it just deteriorates.
Right, I understand.
And finally, sort of, take care of that for this structure.
I just, I just wanna bring up one very important point, because I got asked this question, and the question was, why would you support the resolution to allow CPF to, you know, revamp the windmill where it is if you support moving it to the village? And the answer is, we did not support that legislation. That legislation, we were asked to pass a Home Rule Resolution of Support, and we all had questions about, I mean, at least I'll speak for myself, I had questions about the ownership, and I knew you had raised the ownership questions as well, and that resolution sat there, and we didn't pass it. And then we were just told it was put in the budget and it was passed. So we didn't support that resolution to, to use CPF money to restore the windmill at the college.
That's all true. But then our CPF director went and engaged in communications with the college and talked about lease terms, and they were doing research as to whether, you know, we were able to fund a, a structure that we don't have any ownership interest in other than a ninety-nine-year lease, is a ninety-nine-year lease, the equivalent of ownership. And I don't, I never heard back a final word on that.
No, because Jackie had said that they wanted language in there, specific language as to maintaining a view shed and all of a bunch of other things, that the college, I don't believe, was willing to put in the legislation. And then the talks kind of died out, and it didn't go anywhere, but we didn't support it. So I mean, that's, I just want that clear, we didn't support that resolution to use CPF money to fund it at the college.
Under the current circumstances.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a brief chat with Jackie a while ago, and she knew all about the project. She had, for lots of reasons, and she knew it was gonna go onto her land, in effect, which she's now running the CPF. And this land is an intermunicipal agreement.
Don't call it her land.
You know, this is a CPF land, sitting right there vacant, as everybody says. And she thought, she said it was a very good idea, across from the library, good relocation. And there are people interested in this project that say, well, you know, it can sort of be our local headquarters, like the Southampton Association. They say, hey, maybe we'll make it our official location, and people can the, the group that we were involved with, we started to, actually to try to renovate the third floor of the village hall, which was, was a project, didn't they, to educate kids to use videos and stuff like that. And so that was the genesis of a lot of the people involved in this collateral effort, which was led by Porter Bibb and some other people. So it's sort of grown by this, we had a great location for two people coming by. And so it'll be a center of collateral activities, which is quite nice for the larger area. It's not just the village.
I think our goal now is to bring the windmill back, because it looks very homesick up there.
I would support that.
The town board and the village board and this group should all work together and make, you know, make decisions how it's gonna happen.
It's kind of a unique situation right now, because we're all coming together with the same goal. And it's a combination of a lot of people with a lot of history here.
Well, look, I'd say this is a, it's, obviously it's Southampton Town interest, but because this is primarily of interest for the village, feel free to send us some language, and we'll, or we'll do one joint letter together, whichever, whichever way you wanna do it.
No, no, I wanna make sure that we didn't do anything with the college already, you know, I'd like for Jackie Fenland to tell us what happened, what's the status, because if she's continuing a negotiation on it, then we should clarify that. If she's already, if they've determined that we cannot fund the windmill at the college, that's a whole different story.
And that should be in the letter.
Yeah, the governor should know that. Sorry to interrupt, but that's really important.
How long would you think that would take?
Oh, we see her all the time.
Yeah, one point I'd like to make, throughout these years, that when we did the survey of the windmill, we got in touch with the college, with the provost, trying to get in there. The college always had a concern that they could not afford maintaining of that windmill over there, and they would be happy for somebody to step in and take care of that for them, some And they would be happy for somebody to step in and, and take care of that for them in some way or manner.
And we can't use CPF money to maintain.
And we're not expecting the town or the village to that extent to spend monies. That's why we went out and provided these funds.
But they said they were going to rent it out to raise funds for the maintenance. They said that they, one of the things they said were they were going to rent it out for functions and use that money for maintenance.
Yes, but it's, it's, well, we, we have getting into details of what I, I wasn't presenting that. But the point being that at this point, as I said, when there's a will, there's a way. For us as a team, approaching the governor to be consistent and in one voice, to make a strong stance as far as what we want. And as far as the finances of it, obviously that would be independent of the town or the village to undertake. That would be undertaken by private. And we even, to the extent of ownership, we never made any points that we have to own it and so forth. It's like basically whatever is convenient in the way of making this move forward, we could have even the college being represented as, in the windmill in Southampton Village in that sense. We even offered those ideas and we never basically extended those discussions further because none of the college provosts were in a position to do so.
But the windmill itself would be moved to a town property, wherever that would be.
You had mentioned something by Lake Echo.
Yeah, I mean, even one, three, seven pond, which was just recently purchased. It's up on a hill, it's four point eight acres. It would be much more suitable just because the other property is tiny in comparison. But that's just.
More wind up there too.
Yeah, more, more wind up there.
Well, it blows from the west.
Yeah.
We have options.
So there, right. So if it came onto a CPF property, does it change its status as far as us restoring or doing anything? No.
We have ownership of the property.
Be more visible on our corner windmill. It's an alternative alternative.
Yes, and still walk to it from the center of the village easily.
So it sounds like we'll get some clarification from CPF and then we'll.
I'm not familiar with the CPF, but Jackie's been working on it.
Yeah.
I'm just not privy to that, but.
We'll get that clarification and then, and then we'll work, if, you know, depending on what that clarification is, we'll work on a letter.
Yeah, good.
And Jackie, you know, there, there have been discussions for, I will say, five years with various executives of college. Or is it Tony Brook? We sent one lady to Yale and all places, but there were various levels who said, God, take us off your hands to, to the people that were involved, tell us what we can do. So there's a history there. I'm sure Jackie knows some of it, but I, I don't have a list of the executives that Porter talked to. There were a lot of people.
We'll check with her.
Historical society, state historical society. They even sent a letter to the mayor once, just as you were elected.
Do you want us to get back to?
He's, he's the chief.
So we're getting back to you.
I am?
You're, you're the chief. The five oh one C three, he's, he's the president of it right now.
Next week or something, how we make it out. We'll all talk about it.
I also feel bad I'm here on behalf of my son buddy who knows a lot about the structure. Could not make it at the twelve o'clock meeting. And it said Porter Biv, who is the one that steered this thing and has had a lot of interest, is can't be here. Also Skip Norris was not able to attend medical reasons, but all good people.
And this is Rachel's, she's the head of VS, which is the oldest surviving municipal association in the United States, Village Improvement Association, eighteen ninety, eighteen eighty two.
Wow. I haven't been around that long.
So she's the surviving president of VS. So we've got a lot of people very interested.
She's in the potential areas.
Well, you know, I'm sorry they couldn't be here with you, but you've certainly zealously represented your position.
And I just want to mention that on Sunday, I'm giving a tour of the BB windmill in Richhampton.
Oh, yeah.
Ten AM. So if you wanted to learn a little bit more about the mills out here, I'll be doing that at ten o'clock. But it's the oldest mill in the town, it's probably the oldest mill in the country. So it'd be worth really protecting this further from just all the rumblings I've been hearing. It's just that they, you know, they were marking it with a big X that it was to come down. So that would be a shame. So if I support anything.
What, the BB windmill?
No, no, no. This, this mill.
Oh, yeah. This is marked with an X?
It's when?
Marked condemned.
It was been condemned, yeah. So.
It's been closed for two years to.
Right there.
It's sealed up.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they did put the lights on it at Christmas.
Oh, they light it up every year.
Yeah, yeah. They put Christmas lights on.
We go by the record up there.
But it's been abandoned, no, no.
Look what happened to the dorms, look what happened last year to the Ospreys and the greenhouse. You know, it's just like one thing after another. That's why we have to move fast.
Just for the record, I used to sit there, but it was study hall.
It was detention.
Oh boy, I hope that's outside.
That's great.
Now you show your age.
Yeah, in the sixties.
She goes for history.
The historic division downstairs, supposed to be, was the girls locker room.
Can we landmark Roy?
The gym was way down.
Yeah, I heard that.
Thank you all for coming in, we'll be back in touch.
We'll do a little research of our own.
Thanks Julie.
Good job by you. Have a good job here too.
You too.
Good to hear.
Updates in the rise.
Okay, well, that brings us to the updates portion of the meeting, the town council members and supervisors' updates. Rick, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, I just have two quick ones. I did go to the Hampton Bay Civic Meeting on Monday night. It was pretty well attended. The guest speaker that night was Lars Clemmensen and staff from the Hampton Bay School District, speaking of the budget. But he spent a lot of time talking about the night, the new classes that they offer to kids. They're more, you know, dedicated to if you want a trade or specialty work, you know, the restaurant classes they give and they have a science symposium where it's almost like Shark Tank, where they work with other school districts and, and knock out new ideas and how to communicate. It was very impressive. We, you know, unfortunately Lars talked for an hour and a half and we got five minutes of questions. But the budget was very well received, so looking forward to great things in Hampton Bay's. And I'm sure Cindy will talk about the Great East Stand cleanup. I did run around on Sunday, it was such a beautiful day. Tried to catch up with a couple of groups. Everybody was so busy, Cindy, I didn't get to take any pictures. But it was very well attended. People that couldn't go out on Saturday got out on Sunday. And, you know, I thank you for that and I think you, thank everybody who participated.
Thank you. Bill?
Had a meeting the other day in town hall, a couple of the town board members about revamping either this room or the gym. So it's a lot easier for people when they come to meetings and be more transparent for Zoom meetings and upgrade our facility here. And then new things are coming to the transfer station in NRC. Talked about that and clean it up a little bit more and make it more user friendly there. And that's about it.
All right, thank you for doing that. Let's see, I had a meeting this week with, it was the first meeting of the Pecanic Bay Region Advisory Committee, which is something that, you know, there were revisions to the CPF law that said now you need this advisory committee that's going to also have a lawyer so that opinions can be issued for the five towns when there's, you know, concerns that come up. So this board's going to have to vote on the lawyer that we're going to select. But the law says that the five supervisors, one representative from the village government, which is Kevin Stussy from Greenport, the Pecanic Land Trust, the Nature Conservancy, Cornell Cooperative, the Farm Bureau and someone from the Suffolk County Historical Society. So those people will attend the meetings every other month. And then if there's any concerns, there'll be opinions and interpretations issued and then those will go up on all the town's websites. But, you know, we're just feeling our way through it right now, not sure how it's all going to.
Takes time.
Yeah, it's all going to work out. And then, oh, and then on Monday, I went with, Joe Gaza has several properties up on the West Hampton area and some of them were damaged by the fire. And so I went out with some of the members of the Pine Barrens Commission staff and looked at the properties. And again, discussions about, you know, buffers around the buildings, if that's possible, and more access points and. So, but I know a lot of different people are, in groups are looking at it, like Suffolk County Fraz and. So we'll, we'll get, try to get everybody together and come up with some suggestions, even for our own town hazard mitigation plan.
It's very important to get access to the pine barrels and to any trees where to be able to put the fire out. You don't want to, you don't ever want to give any access to.
Yep. All right, Michael, do you have anything to report?
I just a couple of things. First, I'll say congratulations to Grandpa Jim.
Oh, that's right, congratulations.
That's exactly what I texted you too. So just a couple of things. So last week I, I joined legislator Ann Walker at the 12th Annual Hampton Bay's High School Science Research Symposium. It was really great. Rick just kind of hinted at one of, that's one of the things that the Hampton Bay's School District does, which is awesome. From sophomore to senior, each of the students comes up with a research agenda, scientific research agenda, presents their research, presents their hypothesis. And, and it's, it's just great seeing what the school district is doing to foster academic development for, for students. So it was really, really great. Also, last week, a big thank you to the youth bureau, Tracy and Peter, for organizing the town's first student mental health conference in partnership with a number of various organizations. HUGS was there, the retreat, LGBT Network, Family Services League. And Tajay from my office went. It had a great turnout, a lot of students participated, a lot of different service providers connecting students together. And also, over the weekend was the Adopt a Pet Day. It was very, very nice. I was, I was actually very worried because of the weather. Last year, we had our Adopt a Pet Day outside, but this, you know, we had to kind of move inside because of, you know, the on and off rain. However, it was slow moving in the beginning, but then slowly but surely, people started coming in. A lot of people were, were, you know, were falling in love with Butterscotch the Rabbit. But again, I just, I just, you know, bringing this up is another great point to mention that the shelter will be undergoing some renovations due to some capital improvement funds that they've been granted. So we want to make sure that everybody understands that they need some help with reducing their intake. So if you have, you know, the opportunity to foster a pet, please do. If you want to adopt, please do, go see them and, and thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Cindy?
So the Great East Stand cleanup was last weekend. There are some groups actually still finishing up because of getting rained out on Saturday. So they'll be finishing up this weekend. So I will have stats on that next week, but I want to thank everyone who participated. I also want to thank CRC and Waste Management for, you know, coordinating and getting out bags and supplies to people. First time I heard that they ran out twice. So a really good group of people. There was actually, I wanted to mention the American Legion and the VFW. Those gentlemen went out on Saturday in the rain and cleaned up good ground road. That was, that was a picture I was not expecting to get in the rain on Saturday. And then Saturday evening, I attended the East Quack Fire Department Installation Dinner. Lots of great people were recognized. I do actually though want to mention that our Southampton Town Police Officer Lucas Seedor was named firefighter of the year. And our chief lifeguard, Ann Naughton, was the EMS provider of the year. So it's great to see our town employees, you know, also volunteering in the community and doing such an amazing job. And, and, you know, just shout out to them for, for taking the time to be an active part of their community, so.
Yeah, that's great, we need them.
Hometown yours?
Yeah.
What about it?
Is there an event coming for that?
Yeah, well, it's in May.
Okay.
We got time.
All right, well, if that, if no one else has any other comments, then we're going to take a quick break and then go into executive session to discuss contracts, confidential legal advice and personnel and litigation and then close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.